Order and thank everyone for their attendance. Look forward to a very good meeting today as usual. And we'll get started with the first city council briefing, the I-264 corridor study.
Yes, sir. And before I bring the planning director up from our Hampton Roads VDOT district, I'd like to note that the VDOT Regional Administrator, Jim Utterback's with us today, the boss of all bosses here.
Did he bring any money?
No, but he brings a competent staff. And we're extremely pleased to say our partnership with VDOT continues to grow every day. They're getting the iron out the door, as you know, in support of HRTAC projects. And they're making a big difference here in the region. But today, we've got that corridor study that Robert Mathias has been pushing to get completed for a long time, wouldn't you say, Eric? And today, I'd like to introduce Eric Stringfield. He is the Planning Director for Hampton Roads VDOT's region. Eric, thanks for being here today.
Eric, glad to have you, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and others. We're just here to provide a quick update on the I-264 corridor study. A huge amount of work was conducted with our consultant AECom and some of our senior planning staff at the district, Mr. Cashman and Ray Hunt and Nathan Miloszewski. You guys know the corridor well. This study corridor was from Military Highway all the way down to Parks Avenue. We covered about, we covered nine interchanges. One interchange, no work, and the other interchanges in Norfolk. But if you have any questions about that one, we could provide that too. Our goal in the study was to get current conditions. The counts ranged from 25,000 at Parks Avenue to about 221,000, the segment between Newtown and 64, 264 interchange. When we talk about the study context, it's just an update from the 2006 study. It's a planning level study. There's no survey data included. Preliminary cost estimates are based on $2,015. Like any planning study, we identify needs and deficiencies in a future year, usually a 20-year horizon. And we let, and we vet recommendations to improve safety and to maintain a reasonable level of service. Some of the improvements context, with our partners at Federal Highway, we're stewards of the interstate system. So any recommendations that we make, we have to make sure that they are compliant with current standards. 12-foot lanes, sufficient shoulders for the interstate bridge clearance, 14/6, ramp design speeds, also hydrology and drainage. Also, when we talk about the network context, people ask the same question a lot of times. Why did we want to do a new study? We had one done in 2006. But this is one of the reasons why. In 2006, we only analyzed a part of the interchange. But now, we have improvements that have been planned and programmed for ramp D7, which is funded with HB, with HRTAC funds. And also, we wanted to let you guys know that we think that the work that you guys do in the city far as growth, your SGA's, that we also have those recommendations from the SGA's at Pembroke and Bonny as part of the model. Before I start talking about the interchanges, I'm just, I'm gonna run through this one time, and if we need to go back, I can. A lot of people are worried about the lane configurations on the main line. If you look at Segment 10, which is between Military Highway 64 and 264, existing, we have 11 lanes, and we're gonna, with the 20, 40 recommended improvements, we'll have 12 lanes in that segment. The black lanes are existing, the black arrows are existing, the red is additional. When you get to Segment number nine between 64, 264, Newtown, we go from 13 existing lanes to 18 lanes. When you jump to Segment 18, Newtown to Witch Duck, we go from 10 existing to 12 proposed. Also, between Witch Duck and Independence, we go from eight lanes to 14 lanes. In the final segment between Independence and Rosemont, we're looking at eight existing going to 12 for the future. Anything beyond Rosemont, we won't bill it, we won't be billing any additional lanes or we won't have any recommendations for any additional lanes on the main line, other than the work that's associated with the interchanges. So right now, at Rosemont to Lynn Haven, we're running, we're running eight lanes. Lynn Haven and Alaskan about eight lanes, and then from Alaskan down to Parks, we're running six-lane, three in each direction. Now, the interchanges, I won't take them in order. I'll try to take them by complexity, starting with the easy ones first, saving the hard for last. So I'm gonna start with Parks Avenue. Parks Avenue, basically no improvements. We are showing some improvements that are associated with the arena. There may be a few more modifications in that area, but they will be developed by others. The only one we're concerned with is that ramp right there. It's very little change between the bill and no bill scenario for Parks and Birdnet. Moving on to First Colonial, it's still relatively simple. We're looking at doing a single-point urban interchange at this location. What this does, it allows us to move from a configuration that has two traffic signals where we can control those movements with one signal. We eliminate the loop and the ramp and the southeast quadrant, and we think we can do that for about 75 million. Now, moving on to Alaskan Road and Lynn Haven, even though we show red going through on the main line, we're not doing much work at Lynn Haven Parkway. You guys are aware that we have the ramps coming in from Great Neck and from London Boulevard, is it, yeah, London Bridge Boulevard coming in there. So we don't show any work for that one. Witch Duck Road, we show a little bit, but most of the work that we're showing here for the study is on the northern side. The southern side is being taken care of with the D7 improvements, which you guys will hear a little bit about later, I guess the next item on the agenda there. We have eight existing lanes, and we'll go to 14 in that area. I think it's relatively straightforward at this point. We don't think the improvements will impact light rail. Again, the cost is about 361 million for this improvement. Westbound on and off ramps will work adequately, even if Witch Duck is improved to six lanes. Newtown Road, again, the elements there in white actually show us eliminating the loops there to the southern part of Newtown Road. Oh, I don't have a pointer. At the top of the screen here, we're looking at one access point. We're trying to separate the weave and merge movements here. That's where you get most of your slowdown on the interstate. So we can eliminate the weeds and merge here, weed and merge. We can force everybody, whether they're north or southbound on Newtown, to use this ramp to access westbound 264. And what it does, it frees up all the onbound traffic to use this lane, and the onbound traffic, the offbound traffic will be getting off before there's even a weave or merge element in that area. And we control those intersections with a signal. It should be pretty efficient. And that cost is about 229 million. And as we go along, they get a little bit tougher. Now, we'll take a look at Independence and Rosemont. Rosemont, as you can see, we're showing the improvements for the Bonny Road intersection here. Bonny Road might have to be, well, not might, well, we recommend that it be cut off here so that we can make the improvements on Rosemont Road. We're gonna try to, this recommendation looks at a tight divergent diameter, allows us to process a lot of traffic in a small space. It allows us to control, synchronize those two signals and control the flow coming off the ramp. So it should reduce any delays on the ramp, and it should help traffic flow on Rosemont Road as well. And this is the Centerra Way connection that we talked about in the SGA, so we provided access with that as well. And what that does, far as relief for Rosemont Road, it pulls some of that traffic off of the Rosemont intersection down to Centerra Way. That, we think we could probably get that done for about $459,000, and that's million. Independence, it's a little tricky, but I'll try to get it here at one stab. We had another alternative that we looked at, and it was impacting the church there. But we came back and we looked at something that ties in with Baxter Road. What we have is a rated ramp, which allows all the traffic to come down Independence and make a left turn onto this ramp to go eastbound 264. Allows these folks to make the same movement, come in northbound Independence, they share the same ramp. And also, we eliminate the loops in these quadrants to free up the weave and merge along 264. We leave the off loop to go southbound Independence in place, but there's no weave and merge because we've taken out this loop as well. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions about any of the configurations, but anytime you can remove a weave or merge, it should help increase the flow on the main line. This type of interchange, we're looking at $465,000, 465 million to complete that. The last interchange we're gonna look at is 64, 264. This is our preferred alternative. Couple things here. I know we have an HLV lane that comes up 264 west, eastbound, but it actually stops with the 64 ramp that takes you to the airport. So we're gonna change that configuration to have a right ramp exit, which allows us to keep the HLV lane going straight through. And all of these ramps and loops, there are no, there are no movements eliminated. 64 eastbound to 264 eastbound, it's that movement right there, dumps all the traffic into the CD Road. 264 eastbound to 64 westbound, that movement is still in place. The reversible lanes for HLV, there's no change in that movement. So all the movements that were there before are still there, but just in a different configuration that should help capacity and flow issues. And we think we could get all that work done for about 466 million. And again, you see there is really not any impact to light rail in this area as well. It's a project improvement, so to the north. The freeway widening, this is the only segment where we had enough space between interchanges that we could kind of look at separately. The other interchanges are so close together that they kind of overlap. So when you do interchange work, your mainline work kind of goes in with the interchange. But between Independence and Rosemont, we can widen the six lanes, HLV plus five conventional lanes. And we think we can do that work for about 276 million. And I put in the slides a summary of all the preferred alternatives and the recommendations we have for the study. And you can see that's quite a bit of a cost for all those projects.
When will be done?
Yesterday, I hope, yeah. Yeah, I know everybody liked to get these projects done, but as we go through the presentation, I kind of talk about some of the keys to getting the projects done. But before that, I'll just talk about the summary of the key findings. No freeway widening east of Rosemont, several diagrams that show that. No work at the improvements at Parks, Birdnet, or Alaskan. Only on the westbound movements will Witch Duck and Newtown roads be improved. Improvements at Rosemont and First Colonial are predicated on the widening of the arterial to six lanes, and that includes Centerra Way as well. Independence Boulevard movement, weaves, remove the weaves and provide for the direct movement to the northbound, to northbound Independence to westbound I-264. 64 interchange addresses most of the severe deficiencies and can be implemented in standalone phases. That takes us back to independent utility, because it's hard for us to get projects to go unless we can prove that they are independent utility. But we do think we can get these done in phases. The next steps, before we can get any major projects like this done, when we consider them to be reasonably significant, we need to have those in what we call the constrained long-range plan. The TPO are the keepers of the constrained long-range plan with coordination from the localities, VDOT, and federal highways. And also, once we get these projects in the long-range plan with an identified funding source, and to get them in the plan for construction, we have to have all the funding identified. Or we could possibly get pieces in for phases. Typical outline for stepping through this process, interchange modification report, or IJR. We look at analysis alternatives, we impact, look at the assessment, the impact assessments. We try to develop good cost estimates, and that's very important in this competitive day that we're in now, that we have good cost estimates so that when we move projects forward, we don't get much change between a preliminary estimate and an estimate that we developed for the project. We have to do some environmental work, go through the NEPA process, but that'll provide us with the opportunity for public involvement. We can have public hearings, citizen information meetings, as we work through the preliminary engineering phase. As far as the next project to go, I know we like to have them all go right away, but the 64, 264 interchange, the three quadrants that we haven't looked at for outside of D7, we're on the schedule for H-TAC agenda in September, and we're hoping to get $10 million to advance that project into the preliminary engineering phase. Are there any questions?
Yes, we do. Jim Wood?
Just looking at the various interchanges you have, it's kind of hard to tell what the impact is on local roads specifically. It looked like that maybe, well, you said you were closing, you were suggesting closing Bonny, but then it looked like over there by Southern that maybe you were anticipating taking some property there. Do you have any feel for any of these roads that are gonna be closed, and what kind of takes you're looking at?
That's one good thing about the study. The study team did a great job identifying areas. I didn't pull them out in the presentation for time's sake. But we get a chance to look at the study. We've actually looked at impacts to water utilities, we've looked at impacts to residential and commercial properties, and then we've also looked at properties that are 4F historic-type properties. And we have a little bit of preliminary information about those impacts. And you're absolutely right, there will be some commercial and residential impacts in some of these movements, but these are the best alternatives we could come up to manage that traffic in the space that's provided.
Do we, we have that report here?
You, that report is...
Greenwich Flyover, not the nap, that's what we talked about, Alan, just to breathe.
We'll have the report available to the public shortly here. We're gonna have one more presentation at the Hampton Roads TPO Technical Transportation Advisory Committee, and then we'll have the report available to the public and to the city staff.
Shannon?
Well, that was, that was my question as well, being that this is near my district, with Bonny Road being closed, the impact, because that road is used all the time to avoid getting on the interstate or getting on Virginia Beach Boulevard. And there's, you know, a ton of residents as well as businesses down that corridor, and I just can't imagine closing that road off. But if you've done that impact study, I would like to see that.
Okay. Also, with these, I didn't mention, but as we move forward with the project and we do the detailed analysis with the IJR, the IMR, then when you get into project development, you flush out some of these additional details. But right now, upfront, the recommendation to manage the traffic in that area would be for us to cut the connection at Bonny Road right there.
John Moss?
At this point in the process, do you know what, at build-out, this is when we built all of it, about $2.5 billion, at build-out, what the capacity of that corridor would be at build-out versus what it is today?
Well, I could look in the study and give you exact numbers, but at build-out, the 20-year horizon, what we hope that we have a substantial level of service, level of service C or level of service D in urban areas. Without building these projects in the 20-year horizon, some of these locations will be as low as ENF conditions, barely congested.
Going back to the interchange, which you said currently was doing 221,000, and that's the piece that's closest on your agenda, do you have any idea just for that small piece, what those improvements, does that go to 250, 275, or is it just the same volume but better level of service?
Which piece was that?
The Newtown Road interchange, you said I-264 interchange with 64, you said there were some pieces there you needed to still do, and those ones you're gonna be briefing, asking the $10 million for, was that correct?
Oh, yeah, no, that's actually, the $10 million there is just for the 64, 264 interchange. We already have, going the wrong way here, we already have Phase 1 under works, and you're gonna get an update on that, the next item on the agenda. But when that study was done, we only looked at the elements in white, which are the D7 ramps to provide dual ramps down to the CD Road. This quadrant, this quadrant, that quadrant, we didn't look at those in that project. So now, what we're asking $10 million of preliminary funding for, so that we can do some additional traffic analysis, IMR, IJR, IMR information to kind of flush out the traffic numbers. We've done a lot of that work preliminary, but before we can move forward, we do have to have a formal document, an IMR for federal highway approval.
Right, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Yes, Bill, Emilio?
Just wanted to ask you about, you mentioned a closure, or explain a little bit where you had Newtown Road.
Mm-hmm. Well, Newtown Road, part of the Phase 1 of the 64, 264 interchange, the D7 effort comes down this far. Most of the elements in white will be constructed as part of that project. What we recommend also is eliminating the on-ramp off of Newtown and Newtown to 64 eastbound ramp.
It understands impact, peremptive, along that area.
Well, what it does, just in this area right here along 264, we get a lot of slowdown here between the weave and the merge movements. So what we like to do is try to separate the weave and merge, and we do that by the configuration of these off and on ramps. So everybody that's getting off, they don't have to come in this area and kind of merge with some of the traffic that's getting on 264. So the people going eastbound 264 have a free-flow movement on 64 eastbound without having to worry about weave and merging with any of the traffic that would have been on this So overall, it should provide some benefit on Newtown Road as well as I-264.
Other questions or comments? We thank you very much for your presentation, appreciate you coming, Dan.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
We'll move on to the next one, I-264, 64 interchange.
I think Phil Pollitt's gonna do the intro and talk a little bit about this before...
Bill, we welcome you, LeBron.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Today, we're gonna brief the, oh, I guess I gotta bring that up, sorry, I'll bring it up, the I-64, 264 project and the Greenwich Flyover. We have Salvia Hoffheimer, a project manager with VDOT, is gonna brief the project, and then I will follow behind her to brief the Greenwich Flyover and the aesthetics. So with no further ado, Ms. Hoffheimer?
We welcome you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. I'm pleased to be here to give you a project update on 64, 264 interchange project. Thanks. So like Phil said, I'm a VDOT project manager on the 64, 264 project. Quick project background, this interchange is one of the commonest busiest interchanges with the traffic counts unmatched with other than Northern Virginia District. The heavy traffic volumes, high crash rates, and varying speeds are the main reason for this project to be implemented. All of that is contributed due to poor geometry and configuration of the 64, 264 interchange, especially the eastbound ramp movement. It also serves as a key point for evacuation routes for the citizens in Virginia Beach that are routed to westbound 64 through the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. The purpose of the project is to address deficiencies in safety capacity and geometry of the current 64, 264 interchange. This is the overall project layout, and as you know, projects are split into Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1 is mainly in the city of Norfolk, and it terminates, so, I have a pointer, but it doesn't work. This is 64th Phase 1 in the city of Norfolk, starts approximately at Twin Bridges, just north of the Twin Bridges, and terminates just west of the Newtown Road interchange. All the red improvements are on the bridge structure, so it's elevated due to the wetlands and the poor soil conditions. It provides about 2.2 miles of interstate improvement in the city of Norfolk. Everything, including Newtown Road interchange, Greenwich River Pass, and Witch Duck Road interchange is in Phase 2 that will start next year, and that's mainly in the city of Virginia Beach, with a small portion being west of Newtown Road that's in the city of Norfolk. And that provides about 2.5 miles of interstate improvements and city arterial improvements as well. So quick project timeline, 264 corridor study was started in 2001, and Eric gave up an update on that, what the status is. The main objective of the study was to identify the mainline lane configuration, and that affected the Newtown Road and Witch Duck Road interchanges. Preliminary engineering started in 2006 with a design chart in 2007 that identified multiple of interchange alternatives prior to IMR. The citizen information meeting was held in 2008, and at that time, the project was fully funded through construction and was slated to go to construction. Shortly after the citizen information meeting, the funding was pulled, and the project was brought to the next feasible milestone, which was to finish the NEPA categorical exclusion document, interchange modification report that was approved in 2011, and then carry through public hearing in 2011. At that time, the project was shelved due to lack of funds. In 2014, HRTAC was created and identified this interchange as one of the main, one of the top priority projects in the region, and provided funding to fully fund through construction of that project. So the plans were picked up, and we continued design through all the necessary phases to complete the final design. Rideaway acquisitions started in 2015 with an advanced acquisition of total takes, and then continued with a partial acquisition when those plans were completed in late 2015. Interchange modification report, like Eric mentioned, is one of the criteria that we have to go through before we finalize and determine the interchange configurations. During 2007, design chart, 12 Newtown interchange alternatives and non-Witch Duck Road interchange alternatives were analyzed. Some of the evaluation criteria, and this is not complete, include mainline capacity, weave removal, safety, local street spillback, environmental impact, and it also has to conform with the 264 corridor study. That being said, the interchange itself does not have to implement all the improvements, but it cannot prevent for future widening. So for example, when they lay out the loop ramps, they have to meet the RDI that will accommodate future widening. And then IMR was approved in 2011. This is a close-up view of Phase 1 in Norfolk. It starts at the south end, it's right north of the Twin Bridges. It adds an additional exit lane along westbound 64. And then a new two-lane collective distributor that's completely independent of the mainline is introduced along eastbound 264. What that does, it removes the conflict points and the wave situation at the 64 Newtown and Witch Duck interchanges. By the collective distributor being completely independent of the mainline at the Newtown interchange, all traffic that's destined to the Newtown interchange uses the new one-lane exit ramp right there and bypasses all the mainline traffic. The two-lane exit flyer will be introduced tying into the existing two-lane CD Road. Again, all of the red is on bridge structure. Quick project schedule, the project was advertised in April of this year. Bid letting was in July of 2016. Rideaway acquisition is complete, utility acquisition, most of it will be complete before the end of this year, with one point of transmission line being at Curlew area. Construction is scheduled to start in October. It will also go to September 21 CTB agenda for the award for the construction. And planned construction completion is in fall 2019, which gives about three years of construction duration. Project budget is $9.4 million in preliminary engineering, 11.6 in rideaway, and about $137 million in construction. Bid letting results, you can see there in the bottom right, we received four bids, they were within acceptable range from the engineer's estimate, within 4%, 5% plus minus percent. And the low bid being at $107 million that was accepted by the central office construction. High bid being at $117 million. This is Phase 2 in Virginia Beach. The two-lane independent collective distributor road continues through the Newtown interchange, and it ties... and it ties into the mainline just east of the Newtown Road. The Newtown Road, south side, this is carried from Eric mentioned in the previous presentations, one of the main objectives was to remove the weave, because that's a main cause for crashes in that area, and also increase the loop ramps to meet the current design standards, because today they are currently substandard as well. So the Newtown interchange, you see the off-ramp that's in the same location, that's lined up with the Greenwich Road. The loop in the southwest quadrant is removed and replaced with an on-ramp off of the new roundabout, and the slip ramp onto mainline 264. So the two-lane collective distributor road continues east to Wichita Road interchange. It ties into the mainline, and it terminates as a two-lane off-ramp onto Wichita Road. The loop that's in the east quadrant of Wichita Road is being replaced with a ramp in the west quadrant, again, to remove the weave and improve safety at that interchange. The off-ramp and Grayson Road are lined up, so it's a through movement, and also it provides movement to north and south side of Wichita. In order to make traffic operations work and have acceptable level of service, Greenwich Road connection had to be relocated to Greenwich Overpass that connects Greenwich Road on the south side to Cleveland Street on the north side. That will also serve as an ultimate east-west connector between Town Center, SGA, and a future Newtown SGA as well. Path meeting, which essentially is about 90% design plan, so that's our last milestone meeting before plans are finalized and go to construction division for contract development. The meeting was held in July of 2016. We also had city attendants at the meeting as well, thank you. Final plans will be, the plans will be finalized in August. Rideaway acquisition is underway, and construction is slated to be advertised in January of 2017, with construction starting this summer, or upcoming summer in 2017. Project budget, P is $13 million, rideaway is $54.4 million, and construction is $123 million. One thing I would like to add, for both projects, portion of PE is funded by HR Tag, the remaining portion is federal state funds, and then all rideaway and all construction will be funded by HR Tag funds. That's all. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
I just have one, this is one I have brought up repeatedly, but when that comes in to Cleveland Street, I think all of you are familiar with the two-lane road, it's Clearfield Avenue that runs by, and a Toyota dealership there that goes right to the boulevard. If anyone doesn't think that a lot of people are not going to wait to go all the way up to go up to the boulevard, instead aren't going to cut up Clearfield Boulevard to get to the boulevard and get going, they're mistaken. And I think we are, maybe we can't afford to build it up front, but I think if we don't acknowledge that that is the path of least resistance to water, that that is in fact going to happen. Pending either closing off Clearfield, so it's not accessible from there, but otherwise, as long as that open is opening, I can tell you people are going to go up that way to get to the boulevard faster whether they're going east or west. And so I still think that's a flaw in the analysis that we haven't accounted for, that natural tendencies of drivers to find the path of least resistance, and that will be one. And there's a light there today, as you know, and that will only increase the volume. So I do ask you to take another look at that, and maybe it's a different, but I think that that will materialize, and then you'll start hearing from the people that live on that road. And there are a few, as you know, there are a few residences on that highway.
Thank you. John, any other comments? We thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Salvia.
All right. Now, the worst half of this two-step presentation. What exactly is the Greenwich flyover that Salvia just talked about? Here it is, and she focused on it a little bit, but we're going to talk a little bit more about it right now. It's a roadway that connects Greenwich Road up and over I-264 and ties into Cleveland Street and takes you straight into Town Center. This is an integral part of the VDOT project she just talked about and a significant piece of infrastructure for the city of Virginia Beach. What you see in red there is the bridge, and we're going to talk further about that with the aesthetics. But this provides a gateway into the Pembroke SGA. It provides an avenue for development along Cleveland Street, Mr. Moss was alluding to, I believe, and some of the improvements. And again, today, we're just going to be focusing on this bridge, which we see has a potential to be a gateway bridge into the city. This drawing is straight from the Newtown SGA. Brian Solis is around somewhere. He gave me this, but this, again, straight out of the Newtown SGA that shows Greenwich flyover as a main connection between Newtown SGA and the Pembroke SGA. So I just wanted to show that slide for relevance here. So city staff, I think Mr. Spoor actually initiated this years ago, wanted us to, since a flyover creates such an important link in the city, and the bridge that we talked about showed you can serve as a gateway to motor center in the city, we commissioned this architectural aesthetic study, if you will, through VDOT to look at alternatives to spruce up the bridge, if you will, and we're giving those options to you today for your purview. We developed a team consisting of public works, operations, and engineering, cultural affairs, planning, SGA. They were very important in this process. Even VDOT, Salvia, and some of her team participated. And we developed these six alternatives that we're going to go through today. This was about a six-month process through the course of design charrettes, internal charrettes, and design workshops to develop these, and we're going to share these here. The first one is just basically a no-treatment. This is what, now let me position you here, this is heading eastbound. If you're coming from Norfolk into Virginia Beach, this is the bridge as it's going to look. This is a rendering. Top golf would be just on the other side of that to position you if you're, to get your bearing straight. So this is coming in, and you can see how it will be, you know, kind of the first thing you see. The first alternative here is no-treatment. This is the bridge we're going to get if we do nothing. The way the plans are set up right now, it's, you know, the paper quoted me as a, what'd you say, Bob, a plain old bridge?
Bridge, yeah.
That's what I said. But it's a good bridge. It's your typical three-rail bridge, sorry for the rendering, isn't that good, three-rail bridge with a aluminum fence. The fence is there for protection, it has to be there. Standard MSC walls, concrete, no aesthetics really, plain old bridge. We will have LED lighting. Mr. Hanson makes me put LED lighting everywhere. The second option is a standard VDOT form liners. This is an option that VDOT has where you can, you know, add a little bit of aesthetics to it. You can add aesthetic upgrades to the MSC walls on each end, as well as the bridge fascia that goes across. The level aesthetics include standard patterns applied to the walls on the ends, and a selection can be made from, you know, a list that VDOT and FHW have pre-approved. So you just basically pull it out of a catalog and you can apply it. Here's what a rendering looks like. Now, we took just a sample of one, and this is textured sandstone pattern with a sand-dollar mosaic there. You can see the textured sandstone would run along the bridge fascia the whole way. Still, it's the three-rail bridge, and I'm sorry, the fence doesn't show up in this rendering, but it would have the fence and the LED lighting. But it would be a little bit of an upgrade than the previous. Alternative number three is similar to what I just showed you, but this is custom form liners. This alternative, again, is much like the previous option, except instead of going with pre-approved design, we could custom design the architectural feature and form. Some examples we came up with are the custom lighthouse medallion, I'll show you here in a minute, with a custom mural with beach lighthouse scene. So a close-up of this is right here with a beach lighthouse mural, or medallion, if you will, and that's kind of a sandstone. And again, it doesn't show up that well, but this is a beach scene that would run across the whole fascia of the bridge. Three-rail bridge, again, this would have standard fence and LED lighting. The next two options are custom, something we spent most of our time on. These are a little bit more elaborate, but this is alternative number four. This is the lighthouse. The group came up with a lighthouse concept, features a lighthouse structure on the south side of the bridge with lighting that could potentially be in the lighthouse top here, and then with a platform area here that is for citizens that could, it's a plaza area, I'm sorry, that citizens could come down and use it as an overlook to see, because it's right next to the lake, they could oversee the lake. The other feature of this is this is a wave form intended to capture the wave theme. So lighthouse wave rendering would look something like that. Again, you're heading eastbound, heading towards the bridge, Top Golf's on the other side. This is kind of what it looks like, not, you know, this is intended to be very concept, details have to be worked out, but capturing the wave theme across the interstate, lighthouse on the south side, just one, potentially with a light on the inside. Here's a little bit of a close-up plaza area, sidewalk, people could walk down here, possibly overlook the lake. We would have an upscaled fence here, maybe, so it's not a chain, ugly chain link fence, but something a little more upscale, capturing the wave theme. The fifth alternative is the wave. This is a tubular steel structure made to look like the curl of a wave, so I'm told. I'm not an artist, but the team had people on there that came up with this. What you see up top is the rendering, below is some examples across the country here that they have a couple, and a closer rendering is that. Again, plaza area could be incorporated over here to the side, lies in all of them. This is a steel, tubular steel structure. It's supposed to mimic rolling waves. A highlight or up close of that, a little bit, and you can see the fencing here would be incorporated into the structure, so that would be a little bit upgraded aesthetically. And the last option that we looked at is a faux cable-stayed bridge. This is a two-inclined monopole towers, let me show you the close-up, you can see a little bit better. Two-inclined monopole towers with cables extending down into the bridge. It's not intended to be a structural element, that some, you know, some cable-stayed bridges are made that way. This is purely aesthetic. I think the Virginia Pilot said this morning that this looks like a shark with dorsal fins. I don't know about that, but that's what they said. This was just kind of a six option that we came up with and for comparison purposes. Now, cost summary. The base bridge is about $13 million. VDOT has indicated they'll pay about up to 5% of that cost, which is about $650,000. So that would be included. Anything above that, the city would have to pay. So you can see the first three options are below $650,000, so there would be no additional cost to the city. Option four, the lighthouse, is $1.9 million, our share would be 1.3. Option five, the wave, is $4 million, our share would be 3.3. The faux cable-stayed span, 2.1, our share would be 1.5. We don't have this funding allocated, but we would, whatever the city votes on and approves, if it's one of these that needs more city money, we would have to allocate it in the upcoming CIP. So what does staff recommend? Staff recommends the lighthouse. We think that this provides a symbolic point of entry into the city as a gateway for the structure. It can be reasonably designed and constructed, resulting in a significant signature facility with minimal impact to the project. And with that, I'm sure there are a lot of questions and comments. We will, me and the team will take.
Well, we certainly do thank you for your presentation. Would you have, Bobby?
Yeah, I guess I just have a concern. I think practicality is a good thing when we build bridges and structures and everything, but when we start getting into aesthetics, you know, with the cost, you know, given some of the financial challenges that we're going to have in the future, I think what it comes down to is what's necessary and what's nice, and I think we should focus on what's necessary.
Yes, sir, John?
You know, the Resort Advisory Commission, as well as the Bayfront Advisory Commission have both been working in conjunction with one another and independent of each other as well on creating a sensible arrival to the city. And, you know, we've talked about a lot of things that we've done, we've done some really nominal things in terms of putting up banners and those types of things. But, you know, we've got such a large city and so much to offer that I think that we really currently do a poor job about letting the traveling public, and other people that live here, recognize that they are entering the greatest city in the world, their Mr. Mayor. And so, you know, certainly, I agree with Bobby, we need to be reasonable in terms of, you know, what it is that we do to accommodate that, but I think that we at least need to have the recognition that we are doing nothing of substance at this point to do that. And this, I think, provides us a pretty unique opportunity to start in that direction.
Roosevelt?
Well, as John says, this is the entrance to the city. Would we have some signage on there that says, "Welcome to Virginia Beach"?
It could.
I mean, if that's going to be your entry focal point, I think it sort of let people know what it is.
Other questions or comments? A couple.
Interesting, recently, CBO in June of this year just issued a microeconomic and budgetary effects of infrastructure investment. It's very interesting to look at the elasticity and the return on investment of making things. What's interesting is there isn't any empirical evidence that shows that the aesthetic improvements, whether it's gateways or where they are, have any material bearing or consequential behavior on economic investment. So I think that while we might say it, there isn't. Dittoing Bobby's remarks, as you go by at 60, and I would say some 70 miles an hour, I don't know what the, well, except the rush hour, you will go by there at 25.
Exactly.
But the, but my point being is, I think in the time when you look at the opportunity cost, which we'll be addressing, I'm sure, in the CIP, there is a cost, both of if we have to raise taxes for roads, that takes money out of the private sector, which is about twice as effective and productive as public investment. And that's documented in this analysis, that the public sector investments are half as productive as private sector investments. So that has an impact. And secondly, there's things that we aren't able to do, but we need to make sure that we know where this ranks and does that worth it. I think the form design, which gets us up to a higher level of finish, but the state funding covers that cost. We have a lot of things to do in our community, we've got a backlog in road maintenance, $1.3 million, a lot of money. We have a lot of turn lanes, we have a lot of construction. So I think we need to flip the list and say, when we get to that point, I know, Mr. City Manager, we're not there yet, but we'll have a process for that, that we understand what we are giving up to say that that's worth it, and we got to be engaging the public. My initial response is from people who haven't been overwhelmingly positive or overwhelmingly negative, to be fair. But I think people are wondering, as Bobby mentioned, at a time with financial stress, this seems like we are setting the wrong message. And that other bridge that you showed, that design, which was, I think, the form design, but the sand dollar, the finish.
Like that?
Was not a bad-looking, no, not bad. Private sector money is building that, that's great. If you can get someone to put their name on it and pay for it, I'm really good on naming rights for bridges, I could go for that. But the, maybe that's how you get to that extra finish, maybe someone's willing to pay for it with naming rights. We shouldn't be so against thinking about how to pay for stuff and take some novel approaches. But I just think that that is not a bad, no, it was the one before that had the brick thing, I think, which was the next one after that, you said, which was that one.
Yeah.
That is one I could support.
Well, let me sit back and say, obviously, we're not making a decision here, but I respect everyone's comments, so I think they're all well-taken. As I sit back and think, though, about recently, what we've done with the Alaskan Road Gateway and the art there, what's getting ready to be done at the Lester Bridge, we've also had public, excuse me, private money get involved. And I would think that we should get the people that were involved with those projects, you know, and I think, man, I've already had some of them going through this, and that being the case, you know, let's let them get their heads together, see if, you know, this does become public art. And we've been very successful raising hundreds, if not a million dollars in money recently for this type of project, and maybe we can, you know, stretch the dollar. And how's that sound?
All right, Amelia?
And I can ditto what you're saying. I think it's important that we have an opportunity, just like John, to have something aesthetically pleasing. I was in Arkansas, and they have, you know, it's become, even though it was a cost, I'm sure, the way they have their bridge, the way they have the lighting, all of that is important. And even going back down the Alaskan Road yesterday and looking again at that design, we need to really sell our city in many ways, including public art, and if we're bringing the millennials in, they need to see something like that. So I'm for, you know, aesthetically.
Thank you. Dave?
Yes, sir. Just building on your comments and Mr. Dyer and Mr. Moss, I think if you take this item out, and you go ahead and move forward with at least a gateway signature
on the main bridge, build the foundation here that's got your Virginia Beach symbol on it so that you know you're coming in, and leave that blank as a, as a space that this, our commission and those folks might be able to step up. I think we'll reduce those costs down, you'll get a compromise in signature, and, and, we're not in a rush to build it, but I've got a room full of engineers here that say, give me, give me a decision so we can get busy. They have fast-tracked this whole I-64, 264. Never have I ever seen a Vida project move like this. And you combine that with their I-64 widening up on the peninsula, this team is really sharp and they want to go. So if you would kind of agree.
Let me, Leonard, check one thing. I think I speak for the entire council. We want this project done quickly. I mean, that's the understatement, and I think that's been a message that's come from us for a number of years now. So, you know, we'll, we'll work through this and in the come time, if you have to, let's do it.
Dave's comments were well taken.
I think so, too.
Yeah, I like that.
Let's get on with it.
We'll take that out and come back with a cost estimate, show you what that might be, and still kind of get a little wave action in there. Build the foundation for future, because that is an amenity for the public to go there. And if the art commission comes up with something really, really great, we'll, we'll incorporate it. But if not, it'll be there in the future when we can afford it.
Sounds good.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Good to see what's going on. Okay, let's go to the next city manager's briefing, Lake Gaston.
Yes, sir. As Tom comes up and Bob Montague probably fills in through the back, it dawned on me, you have, you have an item on your, on your agenda tonight, which is the approval of an easement on property that you own. And as we look across the council, I'm not sure everybody really is fully familiar with that.
Do we have to pay for that property that we're giving an easement on?
Do we have to, no.
We did.
Do we have to pay?
Pay for the property beginning.
Oh, yeah.
I just want, I, I, I mean.
Sir, I dare say your hair was brown when we started that.
We were very well, we had to pay for it. Yeah, we're being nice guys.
Okay, with that, I'd like to introduce Bob Montague, our Director of Public Utilities.
Bob, we're glad to have you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here, members of council. We're here to discuss a project that's near and dear to our hearts, the Lake Gaston Pipeline Project. It's been a while, and I'm sure it's culture shock to all of you to have anyone whose last name is not Leahy up here talking about Lake Gaston. But before getting started, I wanted to introduce a few members of my staff. I have my assistant, Marilyn Crane, who's good enough always to come over to help us out. I also wanted to introduce Peter Palmerank, who is our head of our Planning and Analysis Bureau in our Engineering Division. And this is Stephen Poe. And Stephen is one of the many fine engineers that we have in public utilities, and Stephen is also in the Planning and Analysis Group, and he is also the project manager for our Lake Gaston facilities.
We're glad to have all of you. Thank you for coming over.
You have a ordinance item on your agenda today to authorize a utility easement over a portion of the Lake Gaston Pipeline. And we thought we would use this routine procedural matter as an opportunity to get in front of you to provide an informational overview of the pipeline's history, the project itself, and how our focus is starting to change as the pipeline is now approaching, and this is hard to believe, 20 years in operation. To do that, we're going to harken back to 1980. Virginia Beach was the largest city in the state, but had no independent or reliable water supply. In fact, at the time, as many of you will recall, we were entirely dependent on surplus water from the city of Norfolk. And as Virginia Beach was growing, that surplus water became inadequate by the 1970s and making us more and more vulnerable to drought. The city began to restrict water whenever we hit a drought situation, and in one instance, in the fall of 1980, the city actually had to resort to rationing water. As water demand continued to grow, the city adopted mandatory water restrictions and also put a moratorium on extensions to the water system for a five-year period from 1992 through 1997, when the city was operating under a water emergency ordinance. So in response to these challenges, the city considered a full spectrum of water supply alternatives. Reservoirs were examined, but by this time, they were becoming very, very difficult, if not impossible, to, to permit. Many of you recall the well-documented efforts of Newport News and their failed efforts to get permitting for their Ware Creek and King William reservoirs. This was a testament to those, those difficulties. Regional groundwater aquifers were also examined, but those resources were also highly stressed and didn't have the capacity to meet our long-term needs. Seawater desalting was another alternative that was looked at, but was deemed to be too expensive. And there were a host of other options that were considered, with the Lake Gaston Project among them. But finally, in 1982, Virginia Beach committed to pursuing the Lake Gaston Water Supply Project on behalf of itself and Chesapeake, who was a 1-6 partner in this initiative. And it was at that point that the real work began. A 15-year permitting and legal odyssey ensued as the city navigated through multiple state and federal permits and a host of local permits that were required from the localities along the pipeline route. No less than a half a dozen environmental studies were conducted over a 12-year period, and five court rulings were rendered, along with two refusals by the Supreme Court to grant appeals by the project's opponents. But through it all, this council remained unwavering in its resolve.
Was that easily was the?
As every study and every ruling confirmed the need and efficacy of the project. So a few facts about the project itself. The Gaston Pump Station is located 125 miles to our west on the P. Hill Creek Tributary, right on Lake Gaston. A really interesting aspect of this project is that 64 of the 76 miles of this pipeline are located in existing right-of-ways that were already there. As the pipeline from P. Hill Creek starts to head north, it's following an easement that's owned by the Virginia Dominion Power Company and follows some high-voltage transmission lines. When it reaches that northern apex and starts to head east, it then picks up an abandoned railroad right-of-way that was formerly owned by Norfolk Southern that the city acquired. The pipeline continues east and actually terminates in the western reservoirs that are owned by the city of Norfolk that are located in Suffolk. And that's why, even though the pump station is 125 miles to our west, the pipeline is actually only 76 miles because it terminates in Suffolk. So a few other basic features of the project. The pipeline itself is constructed of 60-inch, that's five-foot diameter, ductile iron pipe and pre-stressed concrete cylinder pipe. It featured six trenchless highway crossings and two railroad crossings. These are where the contractors actually tunneled underneath highways. One of them was actually Interstate 95. So as you're driving down 95, there's a portion where you're actually riding right over the Gaston Pipeline. It also featured 52 open-cut highway crossings. These were mostly rural state roads and six overhead river crossings. There's a picture of the Nottaway River Crossing on this slide. Interestingly enough, we were able to make use in five of those crossings, the pier structures that were existing, to support the train trestles that, that used to be there. Some construction highlights. We had a very compressed 21-month schedule to put this pipeline in. This was made possible in part because we had five separate pipeline contracts, and as construction ramped up, the contractors were putting in 7,500 feet of pipe each week. That's nearly a mile and a half of the 60-inch pipe that was being installed. This pipe was being put in at a rate that matched the ability of the pipe manufacturers to actually make the pipe and deliver it to Virginia Beach, so it was quite an operation. The construction schedule was also compressed by the fact that some prior construction of some, some critical path items were already completed, including the base of the pump station, as well as the overhead river crossings. So now onto the pump station, and if you look at this, doesn't this look like a postcard almost? It's like a beautiful fall postcard, and that was not an accident. A great deal of thought went into creating a facility that would blend in with the other properties on the lake. The city from the outset wanted to be a good neighbor to surrounding properties, so the pump station was designed to look like a large lake house. And the facility was also built with sound attenuation in mind, with a lot of effort to mitigate the sound coming from the pumps within the facility. Those efforts ended up being very effective. Follow-up noise studies on the edge of the property were actually picking up more sound from rustling leaves than any sound coming from the pump station. So we go from the aesthetically pleasing exterior of the pump station to the interior, and this is where we get down to the business of moving lots and lots of water. Here you see the row of five 1,200 horsepower pumps that are designed to deliver 60 million gallons of water each day. Now we'll move on to some of the operations and maintenance aspects of the project. The pipeline was officially put into production in January of 1998, and since then, it's been unfailing as in providing a very reliable source of water to Virginia Beach. It's enabled us to get through significant droughts, one which extended across two years in 2001 and 2002, and another in 2007. And we got through those events with no discernible impacts to our customers, unlike the days of the past in the 70s and the 80s and 90s. The amount of water that, that's pumped is coordinated with the city of Norfolk. I showed you earlier where the water terminates in those reservoirs out in Suffolk, and those reservoirs act as sort of a bank. And it's a system of deposits of water into those reservoirs and withdrawals out of it. During very wet periods when those reservoirs are full, we turn off the pumps and save the electrical cost. And then when it gets dry in Norfolk, can call upon us to pump more water to balance things out. The Gaston Facility has an annual operating budget of 3.35 million dollars. The majority of those costs are associated with the, with the pumping and the electrical costs. Also, the contracted staff to run and maintain the facility. Another key component is a payment to Virginia Power for lost hydroelectric capacity that's associated with the water that we withdraw from Lake Gaston. Routine maintenance costs and contributions in dues. One of those is our cost to mitigate the growth of hydrilla in the lake. Hydrilla is a nuisance weed that grows in the lake, and we have a requirement under our settlement with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to make those payments. The facility also has a $900,000 CIP to fund watershed assessments, condition assessments, and necessary capital improvements. We have a major one that's getting ready to happen. Again, the facility's 20 years old, and we are getting ready to replace the HVAC system, which is a large commercial HVAC system that cools down the facility, and it's at the point now where it's passed its useful life and parts are no longer available. Again, Chesapeake is a 1-6 partner in the project, and as such, they are a 1-6 partner in the cost of the CIP and the O and M costs. With the next slide, like I've mentioned, it's hard to believe, but the project is nearing 20 years of service to our citizens, and as such, our focus is beginning to shift more to managing project assets, some of which are starting to show their age. I mentioned the HVAC system earlier. But our goals, as we're shifting our focus more to managing risks of failure and minimizing lifecycle costs through responsible and timely investments into, back into this infrastructure. Routine condition assessment is a major part of our strategy. It's interesting to note that the most comprehensive condition assessment since the pipeline has been put in the service is underway right now, and we have recommendations coming to us or due to us early next month. And we will, in turn, take this information and fold it into our efforts to strategically plan for reinvestment into these facilities and CIPs to come. So as previously mentioned, the majority of the pipeline is located within the Virginia Power right-of-way and an old railroad right-of-way. And as such, the pipeline now creates sort of a legal and geographic barrier that requires the need for communication with adjacent property owners. I introduced Mr. Poe to you earlier. He is our point person for many of those, those communications with property owners along the route, and it keeps him quite busy. We also have these reviews of occasional encroachment and easement requests, like you have before you today, along with ongoing inspection and maintenance within the right-of-way. This slide that's up here is actually a depiction of the small pipe that's being installed over the Lake Gaston Pipeline, and this work is the work that resulted in this easement request that's on your agenda. So I, I hope that this, this overview has given you a little bit of insight, you know, not only to these routine easement requests that may come before you, but also to the fact that in utilities, our focus is really shifting as it pertains to Lake Gaston, and you can certainly expect to see us putting more time into condition assessment and into programming funding to address some of these key pieces of the infrastructure as it continues to age. Tom Leahy is going to share a few more thoughts with you. Before doing so and turning over the podium to him, I wanted to, to invite any of the council members who have been, who have come to council since the project was put into production. If you've not had an opportunity to see it, we would love to host you and take you out for a site visit. It is quite a facility. It's a long, long day. It's 125 miles away, so.
I'm sure they're all invited.
Yes, yeah, anyone who is, is interested, you are welcome to attend. It's a long day. We typically start at 7:00 a.m. and at 6:00 p.m. or so before we get you back, so it can be a bit grueling, but it's an interesting and educational day. So if you have an interest, please feel free to contact me, and we'll get it scheduled. Thank you. Without further ado.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom, we welcome you.
Well, I'm just going to say a couple of things. As Bob pointed out, the project does not come into Virginia Beach. It ends at the western end of the Norfolk reservoir system. You can see the Roanoke Basin. You can see the, in pink, the Gaston line. You can see it's right at the North Carolina line, which sort of explains a whole lot of the controversy. And then you can see it terminating to Norfolk reservoirs. Let's go to the next slide, please. So this, that's, this is close, close-up of where it terminates, the blue line on the, what would that be? The left-hand side of the screen is the Gaston Project. All the pipe and reservoirs in red are owned by Norfolk. The green is owned by Chesapeake. So this is really a regional project in a way, but it's a unique project in that very, various portions are owned by different entities. It's kind of unique, but it works very well. If you get into the next slide, show you how well at least it's worked for Virginia Beach. Those are the water rates for 5,000 gallons a month of water consumption, residential water rates from 1997 to today. Project came online in 1998. At that time, we were the highest rates in the region. Part of that was because we had raised rates in order to pay for the Gaston Project because North Carolina had delayed us so much, we escrowed all that money. When it finally came, when it finally prevailed, we didn't have to borrow any money because we had all that money escrowed, we just paid cash for the project. But because of that, and because of the Norfolk contract, that contract we have with Norfolk that allows us to deposit water into their reservoirs, they receive it, store it, treat it, and give it back to us at our master meters, that's worked out very well, too. And you can see from the day we started the Gaston Project, our water rates have been very, very stable, particularly stable in the last five years, as other rates of other systems, even including Norfolk, have gone up. Now, I can't tell you that's going to go on forever, simply because we've, in this time, we've had a lot of investment in the sewer system. The water system has been in really good shape because of the investments made in the 70s and 80s in Gaston and the distribution system. But sooner or later, you're going to see some requests for raising that rate a little bit as we start reinvesting in the water system. And then finally, I'd like to say that we've, you've talked a little bit, everybody knows about sea level rise, and Hampton Roads has one of the highest rates of seawater increase in the world, some of which is caused by sea levels rising, and others, there are other parts of it caused by the ground subsiding. And the USGS has got some reports out, and they're pretty confident that a good part of that land subsidence, at least 50% of it, and maybe even all of it, is caused by groundwater pumping from the deep aquifers. One of the great legacies that you're going to see from the Gaston Project, from the day that project came online in the late 90s, the amount of municipal groundwater pumped on the south side has plummeted. The DEQ, as we speak, is trying to roll back groundwater permits in the region on the north side. That's causing some great anguish because they are actually trying to roll back groundwater permits that are being used to provide. to roll back groundwater permits that are being used to provide municipal water. For the most part, on the south side, what they're rolling back are permits that aren't being used anymore. The reason they're not being used is because of the Lake Gaston project availability has really solved the regional problem. It is our water and Chesapeake's water, but because it freed up Norfolk's surplus water, it really solved an entire regional problem. So, one of the great legacies of this project may very well be it plays a role in our ability to get a handle on land subsidence and reduce or stop this land subsidence. And that's a big deal because it slows down the rate of seawater rise. And that's all I had. And Bob and I and other staff, if you have any questions, again, if you haven't seen the project and you can spare a day, let us take you out.
Well, thanks for taking us down memory lane, but I would sit back and say, I remember Louis and John Baum traveling the world, you know, working on this thing. But what says it all, folks, is that? You know, if you look at the cost of our water today and where we were, it's very impressive. But then, Tom, you just also brought out another very big deal. You know, with this sea level rise, I think y'all have convinced me that by taking water from out, from below, it is having an impact on the rise. So, I buy that, so that's another good thing. Barbara?
When you talk about memory lane, that drought of 80, 81, I can just tell you, we had many very long late-night sessions in this room that were scary. I mean scary. When you talk about thinking that we didn't have water and we were going to have to start to ask the hotels to close some upper floors, it was scary. We even had a little slogan, which I won't repeat for Virginia Beach. But I think it tells us that, you know, we've... A big project that has so many angles, and you know, we sit and we agonize. We've listened to some really big transportation projects. You know, sometimes we just really have to make some really hard decisions that go on forever trying to work out, but then they have all these other ramifications along the way. I hope somebody has compiled the story from 80 until 98 or whenever the thing came online because that was a long time in working through this and just so many players. Of course, we were all alone. Talk about it being a regional project, but we had some mighty tough times.
It became regional after we got it.
Oh, not until then we got to be very popular, but it was tough. It was tough.
Well, what's really nice is the way the people are working with you in Carolina now.
They're great friends.
Yeah, I mean, I tell you, we're coming a long way, John.
One, remember Suffolk had an opportunity to buy in and did not. Remember that?
Look at their line.
Exactly.
All those deep wells in Suffolk we paid for.
Right, but I want to come back to the... In this relook of your baseline, are you looking at also any kind of remote sensor technique to improve the overall security integrity of the vulnerable points with remote sensing and those types of things, as well as looking at, we've done and see where you now don't have it?
We... The above-ground facilities all have, always have, today, sensor security intrusion alarms, those types of things. We do not monitor along the pipeline route. Those overhead river crossings were built with three-quarter inch steel pipe, which is twice as thick as it needed to be just to cross, you know, just for the function as a pipe because we were concerned about vandalism. Every other one of those tiers could be removed and pipe would still be structurally sound. You would have to be... The level of sophistication to damage those facilities is the kind of sophistication where it wouldn't matter what we had in terms of security, they could take it out. It's really...
I guess I'm only asking, are we meeting the Homeland Security standards that they have now put out for utility?
I'll look into that.
All right, thank you.
I'll look at that.
But if I may, Mr. Mayor, everybody who... There's just a few of us here that were there when this was done, but you've got to remember one thing. We nicknamed Tom Leahy "The Secret Weapon" because of his engineering abilities, his technical knowledge and so forth, and his testimony before so many bodies and the court and courts and so forth was a major element in the success of this project.
Really was.
I'll never forget it, forget it for...
We gave him a clap.
Good job. Okay, folks, now let's go to city council comments. Yes, sir.
I had a chance... I've almost, I think I've basically finished that community management report that Tom provided me, but there's a lot of job growth numbers in there and population forecast numbers and a lot of things. I would just like to know if our development department and other people agree with the forecast that they attribute to Virginia Beach in that report. Because some of those numbers I know aren't exact matches, but they're in that document. But on top of the assessment of flooding, there's a lot of valuable demographic and forecast data in that document, and I just want to make sure that all of our departments agree with the numbers that are in there that are attributed to us.
John, hurry.
Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to go with Mike Easton to a thank-you luncheon for the USO where they honored the commitment the city of Virginia Beach had made to Warrior Week, and they presented to the city this plaque. So, I know that all of our staff have worked really hard for the week, and so maybe we can find someplace and build one that would be appropriate.
I think we can figure that one out.
But...
Hey, we got to find a place for that. That's really good stuff.
They didn't make it small, I'll tell you that.
That's pretty big.
I was setting it strapping on my roof. But I know that the city staff worked really hard, and certainly our police, fire, and rescue and resort management to make it happen. And the USO is awful proud of what they were able to do, and they couldn't have done it without the city. And so, I thank this council and city staff for doing that and was happy to accept it for you.
Good stuff, and thanks for accepting. Shannon?
I know we're going to recognize them here in a little bit with the proclamation out at council, but I wanted to just give a shout-out to the Green Run Little League, who won state champions and came runner-up and almost made it to the World Series of Little League. They did a great job and had a welcome-home celebration party for them the other night, and it was a great, great time. Lots of love and respect from those parents that were out there, as well as the kids and the coaches. And second thing is our city services bill, aka water bill affordability committee. We're going to meet again on Thursday. It'll be our second meeting. We're making some headway, but we're going to meet again on Thursday if anybody wants to come and hang out.
Thank you very much, Shannon. Emilio?
One, Rosemary and myself went to the New Light Community Day, which was very nice, very well-attended. We had our first responders there that gave out backpacks to the students and gifts. We were allowed to speak, and we had a good time. And then, the next, that night, there was a voter's registration over at New Hope Baptist Church. We both went to that again. And so, they are really happy to see, you know, council members coming out and being a part of what they're trying to do.
We were fed well, too.
We were fed well at both.
Other comments before we move on? Okay, let's go to the city council agenda. We got a lot of deferrals from, for example, Louis.
Yeah.
Under ordinances and resolutions, are there any ordinances or resolutions anybody wants to ask questions or comment about?
Yeah, I...
This resolution established in the online commissary ad hoc committee. I've made comments past two sessions ago, this whole thing with the short-term rentals and the Airbnb. I just have struggled with the nomination for this committee, especially with the requirements we have here. But then I'm going to think, and this is a major, major issue, and it's extremely important for the city, all of our residential neighborhoods. And I just think this is something the city council ought to handle, and I'm just not sure we need to create a committee at this particular point. I think it's heavy stuff, and we ought to be the ones taking the responsibility for it.
Oh, thank you for your comment. What I was going to suggest, council, if we should move forward with this committee, that we don't restrict ourselves as to the way it... We say the city council will appoint this ad hoc committee. I think, for instance, in some cases, there's a board requirement of a civic league member to be appointed, which I don't think is necessary. And, you know, so that's my thought for what it's worth.
Yeah, because I've had, I've met with two different groups concerned in the short-term rental, some from Sandbridge, some from Chesapeake, and they've got a proposal, and they're willing, if we're going to have the committee, you know, they're willing to have representatives, but also talk with one of our council members, the idea of us taking the lead as the major, you know, the largest city to do something about this. This is serious, and a lot of people are concerned.
Well, I... Certainly, the council's going to have the ultimate decision. There's no question about that. And whereas I certainly respect Barbara, and I think she knows that, I don't see the... I think having some people that really can dedicate a lot of time to this, which I know that I mentioned to you two weeks ago, that I had someone who would agree to be the chair of it, and I mentioned that person's name, who's already done a heck of a lot of work already. And, you know, others within the community, I would like to have their input. And we do have a time schedule, I believe, that will be, you know, it's something that we're not going to sit on.
I had an opportunity to talk to Bob Mathias before the meeting, and I think it'd be good for Bob to outline what the structure of what's going to happen with this would be so that everybody understands what's going on.
Bob?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you know, the General Assembly Study Group is working on this issue. They're a subgroup of the Housing Study Commission. They're going to meet next week, the next Thursday. Next week's meeting is going to be on the issue of insurance. Mr. Jones and I talked about this. There's a lot of discussion about, you know, should these folks have commercial insurance policies because they're running a commercial operation? So, we're going to work through that issue. The group is required by the General Assembly Action to report by December 1st of this year. I really don't think they're going to take much longer than the month of October to finish up. I think maybe one or two more meetings after the August meeting. So, I think it's probably important that, you know, the council has an opportunity to provide input to them. We, I testified at the last meeting on behalf of the council. We had a bunch of citizens come up and testify, and there were a lot of folks from all over the state. There were no positive comments on this issue except by the Airbnb lobbyist speaking on it. So, I think within a fairly short amount of time, six to eight weeks, we could get a group of citizens educated on the issue, have an opportunity for public comment, and then have that group come back together and make a recommendation. We already have a straw dog, so to speak, a placeholder for your legislative agenda, which we're scheduled for y'all to adopt by October 4th. Obviously, you could amend that anytime after that, up until January. So, I think there's, we could probably do this before the 1st of October, and that would give you all an opportunity to then convey your feelings towards the General Assembly.
Bobby, then Barbara?
Yeah, Bob, with regard to item one and ordinances regarding the trans occupancy tax, kind of tied into what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
And I guess my feeling is I'm uncomfortable at this time as I think it's pretty premature that, you know, we're passing something, and we're putting the onus of responsibility upon the individual right now. I don't know. Am I wrong in saying that, you know, some of the subsequent actions of the General Assembly could supersede this?
Obviously, we're Dylan Rule states, so they can do pretty much what they want to to you. Mr. Kellum was here. I don't want to speak for him, but I will. We're basically trying to have y'all address an ordinance to convey the existing law. Folks should be paying the taxes that are specified, the local lodging tax. Now, there... Here's Mr. Kellum right here. They, I think that's what Phil is trying to do, is to get people to comply with the existing law. And this gives us a way to identify those businesses because they are businesses, and then a way with some carrot and stick, so to speak, to get them to comply with the existing law. Mr. Kellum, I don't want to take your...
No, I think you articulated it precisely. It's an existing law. Excuse me, I'm a little out of breath.
That was a quick round upstairs.
It was a quick try.
I'm not going to get me mouth-to-mouth, so...
Sorry about that, Bill.
No, he's not. I can assure you of that.
Well, I come and...
The ordinance that's proposed today really is helping inform the public as well as the folks that are renting these properties. The folks that are renting their own property, it's a very difficult process for me to discover who's doing that. They are responsible today for collecting the lodging tax from their patrons. I would normally discover those folks through the business license, but state law exempts someone from renting, from a business license, for renting their own property. So, this helps raise the awareness and hopefully raise compliance. It gives a 45-day grace period to get started as well.
But, you know, if I could just, you know, have a conversation on this?
Certainly.
It seems to me a very cumbersome process for the city to go out, to go to every one of those individuals, and I'm sure you're not going to be able to capture all of them. What about even, you know, we're forming a task force to come up with solutions on this thing. And wouldn't it be more reasonable to have Airbnb collect these taxes upfront instead of us chasing down the individual people?
It would be more reasonable if Airbnb would be reasonable, and I'll be very blunt about it. Airbnb has been coy. They could be part of the solution here. They are contributing mightily to the problem. We have folks that are renting their rooms and their, or renting homes and rooms in their homes. They are subject to the lodging tax. It's nothing onerous on them. It's something that is clearly in the law now, and they are subject to collecting the lodging tax from their patrons. They don't pay it. The patrons are the ones that are charged with paying it, just like at a Bed and Breakfast, a rental home at Sandbridge, and a hotel or motel anywhere else in the city. That is your local revenue stream paid by mainly tourists. So, it's, this is not a tax on homeowners. This is something that helps allay the tax on homeowners because the tourists and the transients are the ones that are paying it. And the largest growing sector of this business is online rentals, homes, rooms, apartments, the like. And I'm very serious. I think that if the city doesn't get a grip on this, you're going to be in big trouble. You've got a $30 million revenue stream. $24 million comes from hotels. About $5 million comes from home rentals. The rest is from, you know, what we are picking up from Bed and Breakfast and these folks. These guys are growing faster than any other sector, and I think that they pose a great... They're going to change the marketplace. There's no question about it. And if you don't get in a position where they're paying the lodging or collecting the lodging tax from their patrons, your lodging tax is going to not be $30 million. It's not going to be 28. It's not going to be 25. It's going to be closer to 20 within five years. I'm serious. It's going to get eaten up. And if the state collects it, the only proposal before the state right now is that they aggregate all the money. They put it in, and they just basically block grant it out to the cities. There's no way to account for whether House A or House B collected anything. And as far as competition, you know, some people say that the hoteliers are worried. I haven't heard from one hotelier. I've heard from reporters saying that hoteliers are worried, but I haven't heard from one or one representative of the hoteliers. Everybody I've talked to knows that this form of commerce is here to stay, and it's disruptive because we're not used to dealing with online platforms. But it will be destructive if we don't deal with getting people to pay taxes or collect taxes from those that are liable for it, the tourists, and get it in line. We can study it, and I suggest that we do engage the public and get the feedback from the communities and how it's affecting them. But we don't need to study... I mean, I'll provide you lots of data, but I doubt we need to particularly study whether or not we should put an ordinance in place to help incent people to abide the law because the law's in place.
We got Barbara Henley, the insurance board, then Rosemary.
Well, the money's important. You know, money's money. More important thing, the destructive part about this, is what it does to our residential neighborhoods, and that is not right. It is... neighborhoods, and that is not right, it is just not right to our good residents, and we spend an awful lot of our time and our energy protecting our residential neighborhoods. That's one of the reasons we give for having SGAs, to protect our, our stable residential neighborhoods, and this has such destructive nature on the quality of life and the peaceful, the right of our, our citizens to peacefully enjoy their own property. They really should not have to put up with this, and they do, and, and, you know, I just feel like it's such an important thing that it deserves our attention. We are, we are the people who need to be holding the public hearings and hearing the people, not having somebody else do it for us. I just feel like this is so important, we need to do it, and I'm afraid you say that we need to have it done by early October, well, if we, you know, have this task force do it, and they get the information to us by the last of September, that doesn't leave us any time to, to do it, to, to get involved and to hear the public. I just don't think we've got time to take this right now, if we're really, if we are going to fulfill our responsibility, I just don't think this is something we should shuffle off to somebody else.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I think we're, we're trying to separate the revenue part, and Phil has a solution for that, and I will add, 5.70 or 8% lodging tax goes to the TIP fund, and if Phil's predictions prove true, y'all will not have the debt service, for instance, to service TIP-funded programs, if, if, the worst-case scenario, I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, and the, the health, safety, welfare, quiet enjoyment issue is a separate issue, the ordinance could be adopted tonight, you'd have 10 months of experience collecting it, you'd see who the bad apples are, and there are at least 10 or 15 other rental platforms. I think a lot of people are renting, or excuse me, are advertising on two different platforms, mainly Airbnb and HomeAway, which is owned by Expedia, I haven't done a lot of research, but I've heard that's true. So you might have the same house, you go in, because you have to pay 3%, so I, I think, you know, what Phil's saying is, we're trying to have people conform with the existing law, and there is a computer program that Phil is examining that would give us even better ability to discover these folks, and I hate to use the term, but they're scofflaws, really, right now. They're, they're not, they're not paying the rightful laws that are owed.
Mr. Mayor, I share Barbara's concerns, but Bob laid out a sort of a three-step procedure for me earlier today, and I'd like for him to just share that.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't go into that. The mayor had mentioned last week that he would, he thought Jack Drescher, attorney-at-law, would be a good chairman, and I actually reached out to Mr. Drescher, and what I laid out to him was, first meeting where it would be the Phil and Bob Show, where we would bring these people up to speed on what, what the issue is, we would have a second meeting where we would invite public comment, and then the third meeting, they could come together and come up with some recommendations to provide to council. I know that sounds like a lot of work to be done, but I think it can be done, you, you have lots of opportunity for public comment, and then they could make some very good decisions and think for recommendations. This is going to be a moving target right up until, through the General Assembly, so whatever recommendations that we, this group might make by the end of September, we'll certainly have to temper that as we go forward with this process, and the General Assembly works through their, their process and works their magic. The General Assembly members in our delegation are looking for some assistance, I believe. We have the vast majority of them very firmly on our side, but I, I think they'd like for as much detail to be given to them as possible.
They got a few more, then we gotta round it up. Jim Wood, Rosemary, and John Moss, again.
Well, I couldn't agree with Barbara more about the impact on the neighborhoods, I think that's extremely important, but, but following up on, on the issue with, with the, the tax thing, you know, that, that's, that's not my primary issue, but when I read this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Phil, this is basically just taking the existing law, which, which people already are required to do, and I talked to somebody who does Airbnb on his house offshore drive, and he, he remits taxes and has been doing it for, for a couple of years, because he knew he had to. So basically, this is saying you, you have to register, you have to post a bond after you are notified, you have 30 days after, you know, you realize that you have to do this to get it done, so this is not some draconian new tax, it's basically giving the commissioner a, a better method to, to enforce it, is that correct, Phil?
That's, that's exactly correct.
So, so we're not, we're not looking at like a new tax, we're just basically trying to level the playing field, because the guy I was talking to last night, he collects this tax and, and remits it to, to the commissioner, but there are thousands of people that you can go online that, that aren't doing it, maybe they don't know, maybe they're, they're trying to dodge it, I would guess a lot of them probably just don't know, because, you know, the, you know, they would still make a significant amount of money on this, even paying the tax, so I, I don't have an issue with, with doing this, this part of it, you know, I, I could go either way on voting, I mean, I think it's very important, though, that, that we do involve the community in, in evaluating this, I don't think it's something that, certainly, and I agree with Barbara, the council should absolutely be involved in it, but I think we have to have community input, I just, I just think that's critical.
Get hold of public hearings, I think we should be the ones hearing the public.
We got Rosemary.
I went to a lot of the Beaches and Waterways Commission meetings and listened to the public hearings, I think anybody here can, can go and hear what any of this has to say, but I think it's really important that we get ahead of this, so that our delegation knows what's important to us, and also for this group that's meeting, Virginia Beach is, when it comes to tourism, we're pretty big in the state, and they're gonna really pay attention to what we have to say, and, and I think a lot of people are looking to us for leadership. I do have a question, so.
Excuse me.
The hotels, Johnny, they pay the state, the sales tax and the lodging tax and the dollar a night room tax, are all of those gonna be collected, or is it just the transient occupancy tax?
I'm concerned with the transient occupancy tax, which is a local tax. Now, there is a state, they are subject to collecting the state sales tax as well, and that was probably the catalyst for the state to begin discussions with Airbnb, because they wanted to get their state sales and use tax. And quite frankly, this is why I, I really think that the state may be misinterpreted it, and Airbnb is being coy. Airbnb could report every one of those hosts, those folks that rent their homes, as a business to the state, they could, and the state could report that to us monthly, just like they already do, every time a new business comes into the City of Virginia Beach, every month I get a listing of all the new businesses, and it gives me a manifest to go out and solicit business licenses, or determine whether or not they are licensable. So if the state did get the information, they could get it from the state sales tax listing and give us the information. What has been proposed, and was agreed upon at the state level last year, in the last session, was that Airbnb would give them the money in aggregate, and you wouldn't know who, where it came from, and if I, if I collected the money, or if the treasurer collected the money in aggregate from all the hotels and all the Bed and Breakfast and all the real estate rentals that were short-term in the beach, then how, how would you like that? And how would you like that if you had the fastest-growing sector of that business community getting that advantage over an established sector of the business community, people's homes that they've had investments in, talk about people, people in the community that are paying taxes, you know, you're creating an unlevel playing field, that's why I'm very concerned that the state delegation understands that this is an important local revenue source, and that they need to treat it as a local...
Their revenue source, too, with the state tax.
It is, and we could work together.
What about the, the dollar?
The dollar room tax? I mean, it's 8% throughout the city, except in Sandbridge, it's 9.5%, and that helps, you know, reconstitute and fortify the beach, and then there's a, a dollar night tax on top of that, that goes towards, correct me, marketing and, and other things, and...
Okay, we got John Moss.
Why, that's, I mean, are we not doing that, too, or is it just?
Oh, yes, that would be collected, that's considered part of the transient, actually, local transient occupancy tax.
We got John Moss and John Ert, and we gotta be finished by 6:00, and we gotta make the appointments before 6:00, so we gotta...
I will yield my time.
You're very kind, John Ert.
Well, I just, I just think it's important that we, you know, we approve this ordinance right now.
Absolutely.
I mean, we've got, and another thing, Bobby, you know, we've got, for example, the guy on Shore Drive, who's doing what he is lawfully required to do today, has put himself in a competitive disadvantage, because he's gonna be, the person who's renting his place is gonna be paying 8% more, really, more than it should be, probably paying the state.
So is everybody okay with the ordinances being approved?
Yeah, I am, but I, I do, I do support the ordinance regarding the tax, absolutely, I'm voting for that, but I'm going to vote no to the resolution which establishes the ad hoc committee.
Are we changing the language in the ad hoc committee?
I would like to say that the city council, help me here, Mark, will establish this committee, because if we're going to close session, if it works, fine, if it doesn't, you know, I, I just want some flexibility here. You can change?
I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry. So there'll be no designation to any organization of any kind, chamber or civic league?
Right, right, we're gonna try to do that, but it gives us flexibility.
I'm with that, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
What you could do is just change paragraph three of the, of the resolution as proposed to say that the, the committee shall consist of 11 persons appointed by the council, period, if that's what you need to do.
It, it could be 10, or it could be 12, though, too.
Well, whatever number the council were to choose.
Okay, we'll, we'll determine that before we go out, okay? All right.
Under planning, Traditional Concepts LLC, Princess Anne, they've asked for a, an indefinite deferral, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, I got it, under the ALDI, item two, they've also, I believe, did they ask for it, or you, you recommend?
They asked for an indefinite deferral.
Okay.
You got me on that one, too, right?
Yes, I got it, and I will be abstaining on that, too. And I have a disclosure file with the clerk. Item three, Direct Independence, Kempsville.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, the mayor will be abstaining on that.
It's every deferral.
No, no, no.
Request deferral.
Mr. Mayor, the, the legal name in the proffers is incorrect, and the proffers have to be advertised, and so we have to defer it to fix that issue, and I, I believe the applicant has been made aware of that.
Okay. That's on direct independence.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, item four, MMR Associates, Princess Anne, Ms. Henley.
That's right.
Item five, Tisha Harrison Royal Salon, Baxter Road, Amelia.
I'm all right with that.
The mayor will be abstaining on that one. Item six, Cheryl McIntosh Christian Church, uniting Centerville.
No problem.
All right. Item seven, Virginia Gentleman Foundation, we have a speaker.
Well, I did have a, there was some concern from the adjacent neighborhood that the ordinance that we have didn't exactly reflect what was brought up in the planning commission, so I have a substitute ordinance here, and essentially, it, it says that the applicant will stabilize and maintain the land in a pasture-like state that's acceptable to the planning department, so when we, if we'll hear it, we'll hear it, and if, if there's no speakers, I'm happy for it to be on consent with the adjusted ordinance.
All right, Mayor Jones, I'll be abstaining on that one.
Yes, I have that. Item eight, DeVarris Corner LLC, I don't have any problem with it.
I don't think someone's moving on that pilot building as too big.
Item nine, City of Virginia Beach, ordinance to adopt the 2016 outdoor plan, and ordinance to min sections. 1601, 1603, 1605, everybody okay?
Yep. Okay, Mark, I'm just right now gonna go for appointments on a closed session unless you say there's something else, since we got 15 minutes.
That's fine, Mr. Mayor, I might...
Gotta do Brigano.
Well, no, we can do Brigano, we can, we can do Brigano later.
Okay.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings by section 2.2-3711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: personnel matters, discussion, consideration of or interviews with prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, commotion, salaries, disputing, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1, council appointments, councils, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees, have a motion.
So moved.